All right. Is the recording started, Emily? Okay, all right, it is 6:01 and we will go ahead and get our community dialogue on the 2024 budget ready. And I believe Laura, you have a presentation?
I do, although, and I've got some budget FAQs. I'm going to put these back on the table and hand them out, but we're making some other copies of the PowerPoint presentation. There we go. Who to expect, people with this. I do have, the PowerPoint is really a compilation of several that you all have seen, going all the way back to really almost March. And it's long, so I'm not going to go through slide by slide. Because this is really our opportunity, I thought what I would do is kind of skim and hit some of the highlights that we've talked about, that I think we've shared. We shared out some budget FAQs and the presentation that we, that we walked through at our August 2nd Committee Finance and Administration Committee meeting. And then really, the whole purpose of this evening is to have an opportunity to dialogue. So to have residents who are here with us if they have questions. And that's really what we hope it will be, is just an opportunity to kind of ask the questions, give us an opportunity to engage in that kind of back and forth about thought processes or kind of where we are with those things. So I will, just for the sake of those who maybe haven't been on the journey with us for the last several months. And Emily might just go, can I click through?
If you want.
Let me, let me click through. The question is.
Did you turn it on?
It is on. Always frightening to give anything technical. Okay, so really, this is just, we try at this point in the process to kind of just share all the information about who you are. All of your contact information is always available on the website. Folks can reach you via email or phone. Also included in the PowerPoint presentation is just kind of an organizational chart. I always think it's a nice reminder for people to kind of look at how we're structured as an organization. And all of the various people that are in departments that are involved in that. So really, why do we budget? It gives us an opportunity to really kind of put our money where our mouth is, to think about the priorities, goals and objectives that we have for our community. Look at the revenues and the expense mix and what it's going to take to support not only our core service delivery, but the infrastructure investments that are such a high priority for this council and for our community, as we know through the Direction Finder survey. Kind of gives us a public tool to communicate that with our residents and our businesses, helps us plan and project future needs. And it's required by state statute. But so where do all of these things kind of feed in? Won't spend a lot of time here, but we get priorities, goals, objectives from a variety of different sources, from our citizens, from the council, from staff, from our boards and commissions, and those are all things that feed into our discussions throughout the year as we think about where we want to allocate the resources that we've been entrusted with. Maybe, I was doing so well. Next slide. What? That way? Yep, you can do it. Yeah, the next slide really, again, back in 2022, I think the council did a nice job in establishing key performance areas that related to the top priorities and objectives that we had identified through our citizen surveys. Those five areas, infrastructure, economic development, sustainability, parks and recreation and municipal operations. And we developed some outcome statements and the work that we now do on an ongoing basis is really connecting the dots back to those key performance areas each year as a part of our budget process. Excellent. So what does a budget really pay for? So all of those dollars that come in from all of the sources, support basic operations, they support our community priorities, they support infrastructure maintenance, and they help us build recommended reserves or are kind of rainy day fund as we like to refer to it. I think councils all familiar, the public maybe isn't always as familiar with the fact that we really kind of budget in two parallel tracks each year. One, our general fund operating budget, and that's where all of our operating departments, core services, core functions, public works, police, parks and recreation, community development, all of those things. If anybody else wants a PowerPoint presentation, there's some extras here. That feed into to this, and so we spend a lot of time because it is our largest, it is the largest of the more than 19 funds overall that the city manages as a part of our budget. And then the second piece of that is our capital improvement program. And those are streets, stormwater, parks and recreation. We'll kind of touch on both of those this evening very briefly, but most of our capital improvement projects are funded through dedicated revenue streams. So not competing for the same resources and revenues as the general fund. So we build conservatively because we're, you know, four or five months ahead of when we start the budget process, we're almost nine months ahead of the next fiscal year and trying to anticipate what may happen, both on the revenue and expense side can be challenging. For 2024, when it's easier to see on the PowerPoint slide, general fund revenues by category, this just sort of breaks it down. There are a number of revenue streams that feed into the general fund, but 93% of our revenues in the general fund come from five sources. Property tax, sales tax, franchise fees, parks and recreation revenues and fines and forfeitures. So in 2024, in the budget that has been proposed and developed to this point, revenues in the general fund are approximately 14.7 million, and that's about a 5% increase over the 2023 estimated. So some growth, but not substantial growth. Sales and use tax performance remains consistent. And we're showing some modest growth, we're seeing continued recovery of our community center revenues coming out of the pandemic. And the 20, these revenue assumptions are built on the mill levy increase to 18 and a half mils. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these slides, they're just detail. And so certainly if anybody has questions, I'm happy to go back, but these are, I just provide some additional context for those five large revenue streams, sales tax revenues, which are both city sales tax and a portion of county sales and use taxes that we receive. Parks and recreation revenues particularly from the Powell Community Center, this is, we don't factor the pool typically into this conversation. And we know earlier this month, we heard the recommendations coming out of the feasibility study and the department staff is building out kind of a 12 to 18 month timeline to begin implementing those recommendations to get us back to that 70% to 80% cost recovery target. Franchise fees and forfeitures. Franchise fees are the 5% of gross receipts that everyone pays on their utilities. They can be impacted by weather and rate increases. They generate in this, this year's budget estimated to generate about $1.1 million. And then fines are those things that result from traffic enforcement, code enforcement cases, really any other violations of municipal ordinances. Obviously impacted by staffing levels, other police activity and adjudication in municipal court. So property tax revenues. We have seen growth, there was a period of time, and I, if we go back to kind of the 2007, 2008 time period, we saw actually a dip in our overall assessed valuation as most communities in Johnson County did. But that has been recovering over the years. And so we generate that, I don't have that slide up in front of me, but property tax revenues. And ignore, I'm sorry. At a slew of meetings at the end of the day, and so ignore everything in this white box because that's last year's increases in average growth. But the mill levy in the current year's budget, 2022 tax year, 2023 budget is 16.374 mils. We are estimating based on the appraisers' calculations that our overall assessed valuation in the community is going to increase by about 7% overall across all of our categories, residential, commercial, agricultural, which we have very little love, but driven again primarily by increases in residential, both single and multifamily valuations. So our assessed valuation is estimated to go to that 213,632,383 for 2023. So that doesn't mean that the average, that everybody in Mission is getting a 7% increase. Those are going to range everywhere from decreases in valuation to increases in excess of 20% or so. Very few in those categories, and we looked at, I didn't include that slide, but in some of our previous presentations, we sort of broke down particularly for single family properties, what those valuations look like. You can kind of see when you look at where we were with the mill levy in 2016 at 18.019. We've actually had a decrease in our mill levy since that time of about 1.6, almost 1.67 mils. And that's been due to a variety of factors. So it's been sort of changes in, in overall assessed valuation when we get to final valuation. It's been, and some of the reporting of both the state forums as it relates to tax increment financing districts and a variety of things. But so we've actually, even though in each of these years, it was the council's intent to maintain the same mill levy as the previous year. You can see that we've actually had declining mill levy over that period of time. So if we look at the 2023 budget year, which is the year we're currently in, we generated about 3.2, almost 3.3 million in property tax revenue. In 2024, if we were to hold the mill levy constant, we would generate about 3.5 million or an increase of about $226,000 overall. When we look at the 18 and a half mils, it's expected to generate about 3.9 million, bringing in about 454,000 in additional revenue. And we'll have a slide here in a moment, we'll talk about that in a little more detail. So this just illustrates again sort of that decrease in the mill levy that we've had over the years. This is really our second full year of implementation of the communication and the reporting that the county does now to all property owners in terms of the revenue neutral rate. And so what that means is that we, they, the county calculates the mill levy based on our assessed valuation that would generate exactly the same amount of property tax revenues that we generated in the previous year. And that is revenue neutral. And so really what that's doing, that philosophy requires that we provide this year or next year's services at last year's prices, doesn't allow us to account for CPI, any increase in labor or commodity costs or for growth that's attributable to new construction. So the current mill rate, as we mentioned, was 16.374. The revenue neutral rate for the 2023 tax year funding the 2024 budget would be 15.313. So how far does an increase in property tax really go? And sort of as we looked at structurally and fundamentally in our budget, the things that we wanted to accomplish in order to be able to continue to retain and deliver those core services, police, snow plowing, parks and recreation, in order to be able to make the commitment that we've made to investment in our streets and our infrastructure. We're, we're sending about 41% of the property tax that we collect directly to the capital improvement program to fund residential street maintenance. So when we think about, and I, in my experience and tenure here and in other communities, have never worked with a council who didn't spend a lot of time and thought and energy thinking about the appropriate mill levy and what, what needed to be funded and the impact that that would have on, on the community. But we looked at this slide at our August Finance and Administration Committee meeting and really wanted to just kind of talk about what happens each year with those estimated increases. So the first box, in this year's budget, we were estimating based on the increase in assessed valuation that we would get about $300,000 in additional revenue generated by property taxes. Because we have a 25% general fund revenue reserve policy, anytime, any increase in revenue, whether that's property tax or sales tax or parks and recreation revenue, 25% or 25 cents on every dollar goes into savings account so that we can make sure that we can maintain continuity of operations. So we, you take that right off the top. In this year's budget, we actually refunded about $150,000 as a result of Board of Tax Appeal settlements with some of our big box retailers associated with the dark store theory. And that was something that was working its way through the court system. And then Mother Nature brought two rounds of storms to us in July. And our, it's estimated that we're going to spend about $90,000 to have pulled off the curbside collection for residents. So if you look at what happened to property tax revenues in this year's budget, we're actually upside down. But before we ever have a chance to spend it on any, any part of operations. And so then when you look at, okay, so in 2024, if we were to hold the mill levy constant, we generates money, we take money off for reserves and it gives us about $170,000. And then you can kind of see the same illustration if we were to look at the 18 and a half mil scenario. And so as you start to think about the growth in the cost of salaries, the cost of benefits, the cost of fuel, the cost of all of the projects that we're undertaking, capital projects, asphalt, all of those things. Those dollars don't stretch very far in the budget. But every year we look at, what do we do to kind of bring the budget into balance? We look at eliminating or combining positions, delaying the purchase of capital equipment. We go through each department's line item budget and we look at travel and training. We look at all of the expenses very, very, very carefully and we, we make adjustments to the tune of $500 or $2,500 or more at wherever we can. And then we also look, as I mentioned, the transfer. So we're also taking part of those expenses in the general fund is that $1.4 million transfer for street maintenance. And then about $40,000 proposed in 2024 to fund the residential solid waste contract. So single family properties pay a portion of that and the city has historically subsidized the balance of that. In the 2024 budget, as proposed, it's always interesting just to kind of look at expenses by function. So expenses are about 13.77 million exclusive of transfers. So if you think about it just from a true revenue generation and expense, and we're in balance there, it's about a 4% increase over 2023 estimated, and that's all categories, that's personnel, that's contractuals, that's commodities, that's capital expenses. And no surprise, public safety, which is the police and municipal court accounts for about 36% of our operating budget. Public works, which includes the, the public works department and our community development department, which processes and handles planning code enforcement of that activity, second at 28%, followed by parks and recreation and then administration. So this year, some of the expense considerations, sort of last year, careful and consistent management of the department budgets resulted in about half a million dollars in savings by the time we got to year end. And that was despite the fact that we had a 20% increase in our health insurance costs, the rising cost of goods and services, increasing pressure on employee recruitment and retention particularly for our police officers, and then supply chain and scarcity issues that have resulted in higher costs for everyone. Personnel wise, we're actually recommending the elimination of one full-time position in the 2024 budget. We were able to look at, take advantage of a retirement in the police records division, combine that with municipal court, and that's something that we do each year throughout the year as we have position vacancies, we reevaluate those. Personnel costs, no surprise, are the largest portion of our general fund budget, about 62%. Kind of the benchmark best practice is somewhere between 60 and 65. So we're in that, kind of in that arena, but personnel, it, cost increases alone exceed the total annual increase in, in revenues that we're anticipating. So we are constantly looking at ways to manage those and make sure that we can be staffed to plow streets and patrol streets and evaluate development proposals and inspect buildings and do all of those things. And then we factor in supplemental requests each year. These are, it's not really even fair to, to call them wish lists. There are some things that we'd like to do, but these supplemental lists also include the vehicles and equipment that our departments need to deliver the services. And I think unlike, or like every other city out there, those supplemental lists are going to typically exceed revenues in any one fiscal year. We evaluate those, we, we compare those against community priorities, policies. And then we look to see where we can fund those. And not all of those have to be funded out of the general fund. Even with the mill levy proposed at 18 and a half mils, we still have to identify money to purchase highest priority vehicles and equipment because of some conversations that we've had about removing some of the earmarks. And then in our general fund reserves, we've been able to fund the technology replacements and the replacement of the patrol or patrol fleet, but we still have some work to do for replacement of public works vehicles. General fund reserves, again, you see on this chart, I mentioned we had a 25% fund balance goal. And you can see that the blue line, which is our fund balance compared to the red line, which is the, the 25% goal. The blue line has exceeded the red line for several years. And we've talked about the fact that we held on to a larger amount of reserves. We had litigation surrounding the transportation utility fee that we were holding funds to make sure we knew how that would, that would turn out through the pandemic. We were very cautious in spending down reserves. But in order to stretch the dollars as far as we can, as we've been able to kind of put periods at the end of those sentences or, or turn the unknowns into knowns, we really want to run that fund balance as close to your 25% policy so that we can take advantage of all of the thing, other things that we want to do with those dollars. Kind of mill levy scenarios and considerations, we've talked about these before. But if we look at the cost for the average home, which the average home admission, based on the appraisers' data for this budget year is is $310,305. So this kind of just illustrates what that average increase over the current would be at about $6 per month or $72 a year. That obviously is the, the value of the home goes up or, or goes down, that will change on either side of that. But one of the things that we consistently ask our residents in the Direction Finder survey is where do you, where would you support an increased investment in current and future unmet needs in the city? Not surprisingly, streets, streets and more streets are at the top of that list, along with public safety and police services, redevelopment of commercial areas, sustainability, et cetera. And then we also ask, how much would you be willing to invest to make those improvements or invest in those unmet needs? So based on our 2021 Direction Finder survey, 32% were willing to invest between $6 and $10 a month, 35% willing to invest $11 to $20 or more per month. So I think this has served as a useful tool for the council, not, not just you all, but for councils in the past as you evaluate changes in the budget. It's a balancing act. We continually ask ourselves, what can we do to reduce expenses? What can we do to generate more revenue? What can we defer? What can we eliminate? What is the long, long-term impact both on quality of life for our residents, impacts on service delivery? And just like it is at home or in our businesses, it's all a matter of sort of time and money. So I've mentioned a couple of the things that we do throughout the year to manage expenses. But one of the things that I think our organization has been very successful and committed to is leveraging outside dollars to help support our goals and objectives. That's one of the most effective ways that we can really work to stretch taxpayer dollars, take advantage of other people's money. So this slide, since between 20 and 2023, we've successfully leveraged, I mean, that means have committed over $11 million in other people's federal, state, county funds to be able to support primarily infrastructure projects, but also in planning, the planning and development arena and some other police and public safety. And we anticipate that we will be able to secure another four to five million before the targeted projects move to construction. You know, what are the other things within our control? We can kind of tinker with the transfer to the CIP for street maintenance that's set annually. We know street project costs are escalating. And so every dollar that we might consider taking away from that is just going to slow us down in our progress, which we've heard very loud and clear. We've looked from residents that that is absolutely the top priority. Earmarks in the general fund, those are things that we've just sort of tagged. We have money that's, was provided as a part of the development agreement for the locale project, previous earmark for the dog park, which I think we, we can handle through parks and recreation, sales tax revenues. But we're really looking at what are those parts that we can adjust during the annual budget process and really stay positioned to continue the success that we've had. And then we've talked a lot about just how do you mitigate the, the potential impact of a property tax increase? So we're not proposing any increase for property owners in the solid waste utility fee, even though we're seeing a 3% increase from our hauler. And we can, we've talked about changes to the community rebate program, which is something that we've offered a franchise and property tax rebate program since 2004. The average rebate in the last couple of years has been about almost $600, $600. And so we can look at changing income limits, promoting, how can we make that program available and accessible? Continue, communicate our continued progress on resident priorities and, and then really other things. And then here, so those, those kind of cover the general fund. Very quickly, the capital improvement fund, we look on a five-year planning horizon. We look at streets, stormwater, parks, public buildings and facilities, technology, vehicles and equipments. Try to look at where are we today? What are the threats and opportunities in each category? And it's a constant rebalancing and reevaluation of our priorities. Carry the lion's share of the debt that the city has issued in our capital improvement programs, stormwater, streets, some parks and recreation. We've paid off two debt, debt issues in 2023. And we continue to use debt very judiciously. So in those three program areas, these are just some revenue highlights. Stormwater is funded by our stormwater utility fee, special assessment revenues, drainage district revenues. Street revenues are the 3.8 cent sales tax that we have, the mils that are being provided from the general fund and a portion of gas tax that's just distributed from the state. In addition, we take advantage on the street program side of surface transportation, federal funding opportunities through the Minnamerica Regional Council and through the Johnson County Cars Program. And parks and recreation revenues come from a 3.8 cent parks and recreation sales tax. And then a third of the alcohol tax is distributed to the city. And then we have been able to secure some grants. So one of the questions I hear often is, well, why don't we just take the money that we're spending on parks and put that towards something else? Those are dedicated revenue streams that were authorized by specific ballot issues and they have to be spent on very specific purposes, both in terms of parks and recreation and streets. So, and, and that was very intentional because we wanted to be very transparent in how those revenue streams, when we went to ask the voters if they were willing to support those sales taxes, we wanted to be able to be very transparent in how they would be spent and that there wouldn't be the potential that it would all just get lumped into the same pot of money and redistributed. The CIP expenditure highlights for just 2024 include several projects, about almost $3 million in stormwater projects, five and a half million in streets and $5 million in parks projects, and those are detailed there, but I won't go over those. Other fund highlights, we have our Mission Convention and Visitors Bureau Fund where we're paying for the Mission Magazine. And banners, native plantings on Johnson Drive, potentially a business advertising campaign in 2024. Special alcohol fund, we used fundamental health co-responder program along with along with police presence in our local schools. Solid waste utility fund is where the city's dollars and the resident dollars come together to pay the solid waste contract for residential trash recycling, yard waste and bulky item collection each year. And then we're legally required to set up tip and CID funds for any specific redevelopment projects and those distributions are shared or controlled by various development agreements that we may have. So this is just a slide, it's out there for everybody. How do you stay connected to us throughout the year? And just a reminder that we will have the required budget and revenue neutral public hearings on the 2024 budget on September 6th at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. We have to hold those, they don't fall, that's a special meeting date for us because the dates required by statute to hold the public hearing between August 20th and September 20th don't align with our regular council meeting dates. So I will stop there with certainly again invite questions. I know you all are interested and I'm happy to, you know, we're happy to just sort of have an opportunity, as I mentioned, to just sort of dialogue and really work to answer those questions. So not, not a particularly formal format or setting. So please feel free to come up and ask the questions or if council has any.
Yeah. Ken, do we want to let residents ask any questions? So we don't, or, okay, sure.
I just want to say that this is a very thorough report and I really appreciate how you outlined it and made it very clear to all of us. So thank you.
Okay.
And so we do have the FAQs. So one of the things I think we felt like was important and we published that last week was a series of FAQs, which are also available here and have been handed out. And I've got a few all would like copies as well. I can bring some up. But those will be posted, but really just as we've gone through the conversations or as you all have posed questions to us, we tried to collect those in one spot and provide an opportunity for, for the public to be able to see those.
Okay. And then the meantime, I think what we'll do is if anyone is interested in speaking, I don't think we did sign up, so we'll just do raised hands and I'll call on folks and we will ask, since we've got a decent crowd here tonight, that you keep your comments or questions to three minutes. And if you have questions directed to staff or council, we'll do our best to answer those. So if there was anyone from the public who wanted to participate, just please raise your hand. Uh, yeah, we'll go front row and then, yeah. And state your name and city of residence.
Inga Hofka Meyer. I live at 6220 West 65th Street in Mission, Kansas, Millhaven. Residential area, couple of questions or comments to the 2021 survey, which was done. Are we planning to do another one soon? Just because with the inflation and everything, I'm sure some people's comments about raising, you know, property taxes would be a little bit different now than what they were in 2021.
Laura, do you want to jump in on that?
So we have historically done the direction finder survey every four years.
Okay.
So we would be on track to do that in, in 2025. So I think, you know, we can do some, the direction finder is a statistically valid survey. So we work with the ETC Institute to ensure that. I think part of what we've looked at too is we've renewed both the street sales tax and the parks and recreation sales tax since that direction finder survey was presented. And I think one was seven, I always get the numbers wrong, Mayor, you know them.
Seventy nine percent.
Seventy nine and eighty six percent.
Eighty six, okay.
For the parks and recreation. So those are kind of the tools, but we would, would plan to go out. And I know there's some on the council who've expressed an interest in doing the direction finder more frequently than every four years.
Yeah.
Because you can't capture, you know.
Right.
We've had the pandemics.
And you try to do it like every year so people don't get survey fatigue because we've gotten a really good response rate in the past and we want to make sure we can keep that so that it will be statistically significant.
What is the response rate? Just got a curiosity. Is it more than 30% or just kind of the average for surveys?
Can't remember from 2021. There is a minimum threshold in order for them to say that it's statistically.
They're, they guarantee.
Yeah.
If they don't receive a response, they will go out and collect enough to hit that threshold.
Uh, my second question is on the alcohol tax, I think that you referred to a couple of times in your PowerPoint slides. Is that higher than, is that just charged on liquor store sales or is that?
No, it's, it's liquor store and liquor by the drink.
Okay.
And that is the formula for distribution from the state. So it's collected by the state and then remitted back to communities and based on your size. So a community, I believe the threshold is 6,000 maybe. So communities over 6,000. Those funds have to be allocated one-third to a special parks and recreation fund, one-third to a special alcohol fund, which can be, must be used for programs or services addressing sort of prevention, treatment, addiction, all those kinds of things. And then a third can go to the general fund. So about $125,000 to each of those three funds is what's estimated in the 2024 budget.
Well, the reason for my question is I'm in the meetings and event industry and I do food and beverage grids for my events. And many cities have a higher alcohol tax than they do on their food and beverage and just regular, I mean, just on regular food and sodas. So I didn't know if there was a alcohol tax that the city can charge.
I don't think we're allowed to, is that correct, Laura?
I don't believe we are. I believe that's, that's handled by the state.
Kansas has a lot of weird tax laws.
It's 10%.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause that, I mean, it's obvious, I mean, it's significantly a lot more in a lot of cities like in Portland, Oregon versus what we can do here. So, okay. That's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Inga. All right. I think I saw a hand up in the row behind you. Yep. You guys can rock, paper, scissors for who goes first.
Kim Donaway, Mission resident comment, because I hear about the dark store theory. And that's been coming up quite a bit. A reminder, it's a one-time hit. It is not a continuous hit. And if we knew about this, however, long ago, years ago, then we could have budgeted and set back funds each year prior when stuff like this is starting to show up in courts and we set back so it's not coming out. So this is a one-time hit for, from 22 to 23. It is not an every year thing as far as I know.
It, you are correct, except part of what has happened is there's a limitation. So part of the settlements and, and as this has worked its way through, so two things, yes, we have been aware of it and we have been advised by the county of the amounts in potential settlements. And we have been setting that amount aside in general fund reserves.
Sure.
But it does going forward cap the amount that a large box retail store can be assessed or how much increase in assessed valuation they have. So you're right, it, it, we've settled that, but and it's a bit to know that, but then we won't see necessarily the same kind of growth and assess, they're, they're not going to be hit with a 20% increase in assessed valuation like a homeowner might or a small business owner might. Their.
So they get special treatment, so there's discrimination against small businesses and residential's, I'm putting it on record. So I don't have to shop at Hy-Vee and support it. So you lose sales tax dollars for me and Hy-Vee loses my shopping dollars, same thing as targets. If they want special treatment, then whether they're giving back to the community, except that we are burdening, again, the residents, a higher cost. Not fair. We can agree or disagree with court things. One other thing I'd like to take a look at, and I know that one of the council folks a long time ago mentioned that they stopped because of people whining, is I'd like to see increased police presence in the neighborhoods to stop the speeders and blowing through the stop signs. I would like to see FedEx targeted, UPS, Prime. I'm not in favor of billionaire Bezo pushing through things because I watch what's going on and they're blowing through the stop signs. So then everybody else thinks they can blow through the stop signs and they should be ticketed too. Because as I have discussions with them, those corporations are not allowing, allowing the amount of time it actually takes to travel. Since my business and I've been, we timestamp everything. It is taking us longer to get to places. So I have to allocate more time. So we're not getting the amount of stops done per day. But we're following the speed limit. So I believe that Jimmy John's is one of the worst offenders too. So I'd like to see the police also targeting these because the residents think they can blow right through too, and I'm done. I'm so fed up of somebody almost getting T-boned. It's not right. I know different council people have had that. So that's my pitch for today and also about the dark store theory.
Thank you. Yeah. And, and just to clarify, I think Laura, you touched on it, but the dark store theory settlements were resulting from the BOTA decision and then negotiated by the county. So the city did not have a role in actually determining what those settlements would be.
If the businesses want to do business, they shouldn't whine and cry. They're in here to do business. Now you're talking to a business owner. When I choose to do business, I walk in knowing the rules. I'm not coming in and going, oh, I want to change the rules after the fact, which is what Target and Hy-Vee are wanting to do. So I'll call them out on it. So going forward, thank you.
Thank you, Kim. I would, I would just mention not, not disagreeing or challenging that, but I do think it's important. One thing I didn't touch on is that we are at, like most other cities are very sales tax dependent. And about 38% of the revenues that we get to fund our basic services and our infrastructure come from people who don't live in our community. And so that has been a very successful way. And because we have, and you can argue it all day long, but because we have some of the places that draw people in to shop, it's a balance. It's certainly a balancing act.
And I think always worthwhile to have conversation about being a good corporate citizen and to encourage other businesses to be a good corporate citizen. Yeah, we have more public hands I want to get to first, Ken. Yeah, Joe.
My name is Joe Donaway. I live at 53rd and Outlook. I have a few things that I just want to ask and talk about. The city proposed rate of property taxes according to the county clerk, it's going to be higher than any of my other property tax raises. I, they, I just got a letter in the mail. I'm just pointing that out. So overall, the city will be asking me for more money than any of the other that's, that includes USD, their three, Johnson County State, Community College and the rest of those. Moving on from there for our, I think it's actually a 20% increase according to the paperwork. I have a question about our reserves for our 25% revert reserves. Can those funds be held in an FDIC or similar product that give a return? Even if it's small, it defrays a cost. I want to move on to license plate readers, which was discussed a few meetings ago as part of the budget as, and it includes grants. I'm worried that automatic license plate readers will end up costing the city money in the long term, even though there's a possible grant in getting it going. It seems like their main purpose is to increase traffic fines and civil asset forfeiture. And if that's the way that the program supports itself, then I think that we're incentivizing things incorrectly. It could even be called a hidden tax. I'm also concerned that with set in place ALPR's license plate readers, that it will allow local police and county sheriff to track citizens' movements without warrants, which becomes a Fourth Amendment issue. The ACLU and the EFF are already working to designate those readers as infringence on the Fourth Amendment. Dark story theory, on those refunds, on all future contracts with commercial developments, companies, et cetera, can there be any sorts of clauses in the contracts where the developer and/or company agrees to what the property tax will be calc, and how it will be calculated in the future, possibly on a revolving five-year basis? I also find it ridiculous that Target, which causes a higher than average strain on city infrastructure and is in a tax incentivized position, is getting so much of his property tax back. I know it's a judicial decision and I know that it's passed on to you. There's, there's none, there's no way that your hand isn't in it. I'm just saying that it's ridiculous. I, I just, I don't like large national big boxes squeezing everything they can out of us. Grants, what are we getting? What's in the works? What are we waiting for? And do we have anyone that spends dedicated time finding potential grants and or writing requests? How much time does that person spend if so? And do we need more of that so we can get more free money? If that's it for me. I guess the last questions would be native, about native flowers. If it's going to begin in fall of 2024, will the newly planted items survive the winter? And are you said, accepting donations of native plants? And then I just wanted to talk about.
Joe, we are at your time too.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura, did you want to address? Touch on a couple of things, I think. So you're absolutely correct. On the notice that was sent out from the county in conformance with the revenue neutral rate sort of provisions, Mission is asking for a larger increase.
Not larger total mill.
Not larger, larger, yes, a larger total mills. And I think we've had the conversations throughout the process that each city or each taxing entity is very different in terms of how their, where their revenues come from, how those are supported. Those notices are somewhat, I think, difficult to interpret because they show not the current mill rate, but they show the revenue neutral rate, right? As opposed, so the increases look in fact somewhat larger than what they may be. But yes, we, many other cities are talking about or discussing lowering those mills, but they're in different, their makeup in terms of their revenue streams is very different. Grants, I think, I mean, we can answer more specifically, but it's 11 million dollars that we've secured for streets, for stormwater, for parks, for planning sustainable places. We don't have one person dedicated to grants. It's part of everybody's job description. And we certainly have spent a tremendous amount of time recently because there have been more federal dollars in particular available for us to pursue. We don't always have projects that align with those federal or state objectives. But I can assure you that we're turning over just about every rock we can find to do that. The native plantings specifically were targeted for the fall of 2024 after discussions with folks about being able to have enough time to source the amount of plants needed. And then there will be a plan to maintain those through the winter, that is the recommended planting season. For that, and I don't know about donate, we're, we're still kind of in the stages of that. And I don't know if the chief might want to just touch on anything related to license, the license plate readers.
No, I just want to make it abundantly clear that the license plate readers are not used for traffic enforcement. They're actually incapable of, of, of doing that task. And we wouldn't proceed with that if they were capable. That project will primarily be 100% funded by grant funds. And they're to be used to make our community safer and not for any traffic enforcement purposes.
One thing I did want to add on that, because it came up when the policy, when the grant funds and our decision to move forward that in the first place, when we had that discussion is that before they are implemented, we will both be reviewing what the county policies is because we're using county servers on that. And then we will also be developing our policy that makes it clear what chief said, you know, these aren't going to be chase, chase the speeder cameras. It's different from a red light camera and just making sure that's clear and that we have program parameters. And, and I understand the concerns, but we are, we are looking at, looking at that issue. Or was there anything you want to add on the other points?
I think that was it.
All right. Do we have any other hands from the audience? Yes. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Mary Pogie. I'm a resident of Mission Board One. Okay, so I had, I guess my questions are, I don't own, I'm, I'm not a business owner, so I don't really know anything about like commercial things. As far as property taxes and the, the landowners on Johnson Drive, I guess. How does it affect them with things going up? Like, do they get a, do they get to use that tax rebate situation or am I understanding that correctly?
I think it varies. So I think there's a mix of both property owners and tenants or people who are leasing space from property owners on Johnson Drive. So commercial property is assessed at 25% of its appraised value. Residential property is assessed at 11 and a half percent. So commercial properties are paying a higher, a higher tax by virtue of those. A higher tax by virtue of those percentages that are, are set. I don't know. I'm not familiar enough with how businesses may be able to write off or manage their, you know, their own property tax commitments. We don't specifically have a property tax rebate for business owners like we do for residential or, or single-family owners. But we do have a business improvement grant program and some other resources that are available.
Okay. I just wondered how that would affect because I know that rent going up can make some of our small businesses. Bumose. Okay, so I guess basically I just kind of wanted to make a statement really. You know, my main concerns with how the city functions tend to be our lower-income residents having the ability to live here. One of the many things I love about Mission is that it's a place for everybody. And retaining those small businesses. That are actually like shoppable and therefore bring people into the community to spin that, that moolah. And then how sustainably we're fixing what is, seems to be sort of crumbling a little bit, infrastructure-wise. And it, from what I can understand from reading the things and, and listening to everybody. It seems kind of like a lot of what's happened with our, our roads and our infrastructure and all these things is sort of been a result of. Oh, let the people in the future deal with it. And unfortunately, and I wish this wasn't the time when. We future people are having to deal with it because there's so many other things going on that's so expensive to just be a human being who lives on the earth. But unfortunately it is today. So as much as like this, raising any sort of tax or anything like that, I, it's generally just. Not great. I think it's one of those things where. From what I can tell from looking at kind of critically is that we, we don't really have much of a choice. And so. I think that we need our roads to be fixed. We need not to have holes. We need to be able to afford. Like, I have to tell you, when I, where my house is, it's right by where the snowplows come out and it's, I, I'm one of the first streets that gets plowed and it's really lovely. But also I know that they're going to be there and I would hate for budgets to change for our. Our safety measures for our parks, for our things like that. It sounds like they won't, but. Anyway, I think this was at my timer. Okay. Goodbye.
Thank you, Mary. All right. Do we have any other hands from the audience? Yes, back row.
Hello, Council. Dustin Wolf, resident of Mission in the forty-nine-hundred Townhome Complex. Definitely a tough position to be in, looking at rising costs with the economy as it is. Plus the class of inflation and the effect that that has on expected salaries. Obviously you talked about the cost of benefits. I'm very lucky to be a member of the Parks, Recreation and Tree Advisory Council. And I've gotten a lot of insight into what the rising costs have been from proposals and bids from contractors for the work that they're doing, for the dedicated. Funds that we have towards those programs and even making those work with what we have set out from a budgetary standpoint has been challenging, at least from what I've heard from the. Great Mission Parks and Rec team. So I definitely understand that's a tough position to be in. I'm supportive of whatever we can do to balance the budget as, as, as much as possible. Obviously that tends to look like as, as we're considering mill levy increases. And, and being understanding of what type of impact that can have for some of our most vulnerable citizens, those with fixed incomes. Tough challenge, tough position to be in as a city council. So I appreciate the consideration that you all have in the public hearings. I'm curious about what the timeline looks like. Today, we're talking about a mill levy increase and what the timeline for the future will look like for. Going, you know, doing the line items and a proposed expenditure budget and how that plays out, just because I don't have that experience. And I'm also curious if you might answer any questions around the twenty-five percent reserve contribution policy and where that's set out. Is that part of the city? Charter or how does that, I mean, I know all the specific terminology, but how's that set out as well too? So if you might ask those questions or answer those questions.
Yes. You remind me, so I was listening so intently. I missed the first one. I heard the second one.
Timeline for.
And when do we look at the expenditures side, I think was part of that.
So. I will work, that will go out with the packet next week. The full line item budget and a really more sort of complete overview and more narrative than, than visual in these PowerPoint presentations. You'll hold the budget public hearing and tend to exceed revenue neutral. And so we have, part of the challenge that we have in putting line item budgets out too soon is. Between June and August, we've had some pretty significant changes already. Storm expenses and things like that. So those will be available. I think the dust has settled on those. And then the second one is the reserve policy. It's actually a council policy that they adopted several years ago. But it is based on sort of best practice set out by the Government Finance Officers Association. Our policy is twenty-five percent of annual general, general fund revenues. The GFOA suggests two months of operating reserves. I do the math every year and they're about equal. So we just stick with twenty-five percent of. You know, and, and there are some cities who, you know, who maybe have a fund balance policy and then they exceeded. They may be sitting on forty or fifty percent. I think historically in the work that we've done with our council, the goal is. To make sure we can cover unanticipated expenses, but we want to stretch. There's no reason, that money's not helping us sitting in the bank if we can use it to fix a street or. Put a new playground in, do those kinds of things.
And in addition to it being best practices, it does have an impact on our bond rating, which ultimately impacts our interest rates when we go out for debt financing on any of our larger projects. So that we have a double A plus bond rating as of our last issue. And, and that's always something that the reviewing agencies look at.
Okay, thanks very much.
I always forget that one.
Laura, you mentioned money sitting in the bank and I think Mr. Donaway also asked, you know, if we're able to get an interest on that or how that.
Oh, we are, yes. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to answer that. So I can tell you that in. It depends on interest rates. So we are limited by state statute on where we can invest funds, but I can tell you that in what we had invested. We earned over a hundred thousand dollars of interest in twenty twenty-two on general fund reserves. So. Try to take advantage of that. And it's, sometimes it's a bit of a balancing act because. We have these large projects that are coming in and where money's going out in half million plus chunks. And so it's kind of how long or what, you know, what instruments do we have available that we can invest in? But we do try to take advantage. Of that where we can.
Yeah, just wanted to make a quick comment. There were a couple of themes from recent comments about looking out for fixed income folks and folks who are having. A little bit more of the bearing the brunt of this. You know, we will be standing up if the body decides to go through with this. We will be standing up a relief fund for those folks. I don't know if Laura, you've mentioned that earlier. But that will be something that would be available as a potential, as for relief for some of those folks if this does go through.
Yeah, we've had that program in place since two thousand and four and we'll be looking at how can we better market that program and make sure it's reaching. The folks who really need it. And then also looking at, does it make sense to adjust any of our income qualifications? It's a pretty easy process to apply and we try not to make it burdensome, but we're always looking at how can we make it better? And that's something we're taking another look at again this year. And we have literally two minutes before our next meeting. So Ken, Hillary, you get a minute each.
I just wanted to say thank you to all the representatives from our community that have chosen to speak tonight. Really appreciate that. The one thing that I did want to ask the chief about was regarding the speeding. I don't think that we're allowed to target specific businesses in, in speeding enforcement.
That's correct. We just have to do our observations independently and, and in those areas that, that when we have the opportunity to have. Traffic enforcement set up in a, in a particular location.
Hillary, last word.
Yeah, I appreciated Mary's comment and reflecting on the small business burden as we look at increasing property taxes. And maybe the staff and the mayor can further explore what it might look like to expand the rebate program, not just in its value, but. Having a residential program and a commercial program for, you know, small businesses of a particular size. Maybe it's just a rent relief program. Maybe it's, you know, I, I'd like for us to dig into that more. So thank you, Mary, for that suggestion.
All right. Well, like to echo Ken's comments and say thank you for everyone who came out tonight. This is one of, I think, our better turnout since I've been on the council and now mayor. And so really appreciate you all taking your time out of your busy schedules. And hopefully we've answered some of your questions. And again, our contact information is in the packet that was handed out. So please feel, feel free to reach out if you have further questions. Thanks, everyone.
Just your picture and then they have, you have to go to their website.
Oh, go on the website. Sorry. Yes. And that will conclude our community dialogue. Thank you.